How things have been working tonight? We have a number of guests. We may accommodate some flight schedules. Um, meeting locations, Oxford Preparatory Academy, South Orange County Campus 2280 Long Drive, Ray Forest, California 92691. And we have a teleconference location and they can hear us over there. Is that right? Chase?
I don't know. They weren't responding to me.
Yes, we can.
There you go. Our teleconference location is Oxford Preparatory Academy, South Orange County Campus 23000 via Santa Maria Mission Gate, California 92691. The public, including public attendance at the conference location are invited to address the board regarding items, system, and agenda. Comments on agenda items will be accepted during consideration of that item or required to consideration of the item in the case of a closed session item. Please turn in common cards to the board secretary prior to the item you wish to speak on. Let's do our roll call. Rain Jackson-Treasure.
Here.
Albert Diaz-Secretary.
Here.
Joseph Hayne, Vice Chair.
Here.
And Santa Varner, Board Chair President. Pledge of allegiance. Do you agree with my?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need to approve the agenda for our special board meeting for January 11th, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Okay, we are official. Okay. So, welcome everyone. As I said, Happy New Year. We do have a couple of superstars in the house tonight that we're very excited about. I know that we're all very happy and relieved to leave 2017 in the rearview mirror. We've obviously turned in the corner, a very exciting corner, and that's why we have three former superintendents in the house tonight that are going to be here to help us get through the next few months and the important tasks that we have to do. So, I don't think a year ago we would have some superintendents in the house, but I think it's a real testament to where we are and the hard work that the administration, the board, the staff, and the teachers and the parents have done over the past year. So, I'm very excited to be looking forward into 2018. We do need to change the schedule around a little bit. We have Catherine Jordan, who is down from up in the north, and she needs to fly back tonight. We all know the Orange County rules, John Wayne Airport, I'm flying, so she'll have to be out by a certain time. So, we're going to start closed session and then we're going to go into our board study session, and then we'll probably have to go back into closed session after the study session. Okay? So, the public announcement of reason for closed session. We have a public employee appointment, the title Executive Director under Government Code Section 54957. We have public employee appointment, Government Code Section 54957, Intervent Executive Director. And we have public employee appointment, Government Code Section 54957, Title Manager Director. So, I believe we have one comment card, is that correct?
We have one.
Okay. Did you put it up here?
I did. Ken Rais.
Okay, okay. Ken Rais. The only public comments that we're having tonight because this is a board study session is for closed session items. Because this is a study session, it gives the board an opportunity to have an in-depth discussion regarding our search for an executive director. And so, our stakeholders will have their opportunity also to have their input. But tonight is our opportunity to ask our questions and have our input. Okay?
Good evening, board members. As we're looking for an ED and it's on the agenda, we have our certain candidates that we're looking at. I hope that you keep in mind what OPA is all about. We're about family. We're about patriotism. We're about service. We have a high-performing school, as is evident with the OCDE. We just had this last week who gave us high marks about what our program stands for. I hope as you're looking, you will remember that. I had the opportunity to work on the Saddleback Campus this week, and I have to give kudos to Ms. Lohoff, Mr. Bridges, Ms. Foucher, and the entire staff here. As I was working here and I was working with students, these students came up and they were, "Thank you." They were pleased. They asked me how my day was. And when I responded, they told me, "Have a great day." Those adecedents of excellence, our climber for what we teach our kids, our stand and deliver, our looking people in the eyes, they mean a lot. When our kids go to other schools, they look at our kids, and I appreciate and I give total kudos to Ms. Lohoff and the staff here. And because I've seen it here, I'm hoping it's also happening at the South Orange County Campus. And I want to give a kudos for keeping the OPA program alive, which was totally commended at the OCDE presentation that we did. Losing the Chino campus was a heartbreak, but it's time to move on. As a wise orangutan once said, for anybody who likes The Lion King, "Leave your past in the past." Thank you, board, for working collaboratively to conquer the challenges that have been brought to OPA with such dignity and class. Little eyes are watching each and every one of you. If you're not a Trump supporter, forgive me, but I am. He says, "Let's make America great again. Let's make OPA great again." The 2018 motto for me this year, and I hope we go on to it, is "The best is yet to come."
I went to an award ceremony, just tagging on to what you just talked about, at a different charter school that a number of our OPA Chino students drive now. And almost every award went to a former OPA student, you know? So, what's exciting about that is that they're taking their excellence now into new communities and showing these new communities how excellence can grow where their planet is. So, that was very exciting. So, we are going to go into closed session. We will be back. And so, we're going to close session at?
5:30.
5:34. Thank you, everyone, for your patience.
To order, we're back in session at 7:07. I apologize. We haven't seen each other in two months, so we had something to talk about. So, thank you so much for your patience. As I indicated prior to going into closed session, we do have two superstars in the room. We are so honored to have Dr. Dennis Smith and Dr. Peggy Lynch joining us. They are our search committee leadership associates. I will tell you that we tried to get you a year ago and you said no. Honestly, I can't blame you, but we're a new organization today, and so we are deeply honored. I could read you their resumes, but I think I least want you to know that Dr. Dennis Smith served as Superintendent of Schools for the Placentia Yorba Linda Unified School District, 25,000 ADA, in Orange County, California until June of 2012. And I know that a lot of people, educators in this office, definitely know him. Dr. Peggy Lynch is also a partner of Leadership Associates, and she also served as Superintendent of the Brea O Linda Unified School District in North Orange County for seven years, part of her nearly 14 years serving as a superintendent. So, we're looking for your wisdom, for your guidance. We're ready to hire an executive director, and we're so excited that you're part of the team. So, thank you so much for joining us. So, we are going to be moving into the board component. This will be a board-only discussion. As I said, stakeholders, you will have your opportunity also to have input. And so, Dr. Smith, I'm going to turn it over to you to kind of walk us through what we're going to do here.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Gardner. We're really pleased and grateful to be here. Dr. Lynch and I are both have a lot of respect for the Oxford Preparatory Academy. We know the work and the good things that have been done in this school, in these schools for a number of years. We were involved in the search five years ago. We got to know both the Chino school and the two down in South County. And so, we greatly respect the teachers here. Outstanding staff, great education, and so we look forward to working with you. We've done a number of charter schools. We'll talk about that. We do superintendent searches, assistant superintendent searches. So, this is a nice opportunity for us to give back to a community that we feel pretty close to because we've been part of South Orange County for a lot of years. You gave a nice introduction, and Peggy, anything you want to say? We want to give a little bit about our firm?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, you guys speak into the mic a little more.
Okay. Thank you. This is intended as a real work session to kind of get down to the roots of what you're looking for in a new executive director, but we want to just give you a little background, not much, on ourselves, and then we'll get right to work. You've done a nice job of...
Yeah. So, basically, this is just our background. Both of us have been superintendents for quite a while. Dennis went out of state for a while, came back, and both of us are local. Dennis lives in Laguna Beach, and I live in San Clemente, so we're not very far away. We have, you're enjoying this? Some of our searches and some of the listing of some of the things we've done over the years. We've done over 365, really close to 400 searches now in California. We've done a charter high school. We've done the University Prep Academy. We did this one before. Saddleback Valley, CA, South County, Selpa Executive Directors, Placentia Yorba Linda in Orange. So, we've got a connection all over this county as well as other counties. So, I think our next...
And part of the importance of this too is, as we work in school districts, I think some of the individuals who may be prime candidates are current educators across the state and certainly in Orange County. So, those roots and the depth of relationships we have help us as we begin to recruit individuals who might be just the right match for the academy here. Oops. Am I? Can you go ahead and turn? Okay. Good.
And I think this kind of plays a little bit to some of the connections we have around the state. Many of us are active in national as well as state organizations. And if state active, even though we call ourselves quote-unquote retired, but we're really not. And so, we have relationships with universities as well as organizations, both nationally and locally and in the state. We have, I think our next one is, this will show our partners. We have 13, 13 now or 14? I've lost track of how many there are. Partners around the state, and we talk on the phone every two weeks, which allows us to really connect to the kinds of people that are out there. We talk about what searches we're doing, what are we looking for, and they help us not only, although we're the two people on the search, they help us and support us around the state to identify candidates, to help us with references, those kinds of things. So, it's a great support system around the state.
And it could be your next executive director is right here in Orange County, or it could be San Diego, central part of state or northern part of state, and that'll be the reach that we have. We'll talk about whether it's going to be a national search or not. More than likely, it'll be more localized into the state of California, but we'll see what your preferences are in that regard. And then finally, we're just going to briefly, because I don't believe you've been through this search process before, have you? Anybody on the board? You meant probably through different processes, but just quickly to kind of go through sort of the elements of the search that are key and important. You know, the first is what we're doing this evening is getting from you the characteristics that you really want to see in your next executive director, whether the personal or the professional characteristics, what are the strengths of the academy, and what are the challenges? What are the challenges this individual will face and what are the challenges facing the academy itself? And so, we start with you. We talked to you about timeline and a variety of different things this evening, including protocols and who else, as you mentioned, Mrs. Gardner, the stakeholders, teachers and others, we want to reach out. But we're going to talk to you about who it is that we should be talking with. Then, it's all that input that'll take place over the next several weeks to a month, and we really want you to be thinking about who it is we should be meeting with, and we'll talk about that this evening. We also have an online survey. I think you have a copy of that, and we'll adjust that so parents and community members can also provide input into the characteristics of the new executive director. Then, it's the recruitment that we talked about, the advertisement, but there's passive recruitment, which is put it in the journals and see who shows up, or active recruitment, picking up the phone, talking to superintendents, talking to county superintendents, talking to other charter organizations, talking to other executive directors and board members and say, "Who is the right person? We think we have a unique opportunity." So, that's much more of that personal connection than just the passive, but we will be in edcal, we'll be in the charter organization journals, but we'll also be picking up the phone and contacting individuals. And then, and we'll keep you up to date in terms of all the things that happen there. And then, the last phase is when we present, we've built the profile based upon what you said, what the community said. We've advertised off that profile, and then we present all the candidates to you. You see every candidate. We will have vetted those candidates, and we'll kind of share with you who we think which of those candidates best match the characteristics and the profile you developed. It's your search. You'll see every candidate. You'll make the decision, and then we'll go through and you'll do the interview process and ultimately select that person. And then, we'll kind of stay with you right through the time in which you finally approve the contract. So, any questions on that? This is quick over here.
...of a process, but yes, exactly.
Okay?
Good.
All right. I think we're done with this, and do you have the agenda for this evening in front of you? I think Dr. Hall shared that with everybody.
Yes.
Does this one have seven points on it?
Yes.
Okay. So, what we'd like to cover with the board this evening is to get your input in what, who you think is going to be the right person for this job, what it is that we should be looking for, strengths and challenges that the academy faces, as well as those professional and personal characteristics, and the background. Who is it that you're going to be very pleased to see in terms of personal background, and what is it that you may say, "No, we really want this and not this" in terms of professional background? So, those are the first three categories. And then, we do want to talk to you about who we should meet with, the number four. And then, a timeline. We have a draft, but it has to be flushed out with you. And so, hopefully you have your calendars, because we'll try to lock in everything right up to the date we present candidates to you, lock that date in, and then the interview date. And then, the board protocols. Who are we working with during the search?
Okay.
And so, we'll talk about that, and we've seen it done in a variety of different ways, so find out what do you want? And then, anything else you want to talk about? And if we have the opportunity to go into closed session for a relatively brief period of time, but just talk about any potential candidates. So, it'd be the personnel-related issues in closed session. Okay?
Okay.
All right. So, Peggy is going to facilitate, and I'm going to take some notations as we go along.
So, when we start out, we really want to have you think about the personal characteristics, the professional characteristics, and whatever experiences you hope this person has. Is it important that they must have had charter experience? What are those kinds of experiences? Do you care if they're from out of state? Must they have a doctorate? All of those kinds of things. That helps us frame the profile as we start to recruit and talk to candidates. So, what Dennis is going to do is just start taking notes from the general perspective first with the characteristics, qualities, experiences you want in this new person. Okay? So, we can start, if you'd like, we can start from one end and work our way down, whichever works best, and I'll leave that to you to decide how you best would like to do it.
Would you like to share?
At one point or another, when we were self-directed our ED search, I started then realizing, you know, I think we would be best served by bringing in a professional organization. We had developed our own criteria for what we were looking for, and we were doing kind of a weighted thing. If they had this degree, they'd get this many points. If they had this, they'd get that many points. Has anyone shared that with you guys?
No, but that would be really helpful. So, if you have that, we can, and if you're generally in agreement with it or as a group, then we can use, start from there. We don't need it tonight if you don't have it, but if you have it and it's in general agreement, unless there's something different you want to have, we can use that document to start and refine that as we listen to the other groups in terms of their input.
And then, after you've got everybody's input, do you come back to us?
Right. What we do is we would draft basically what we call a position description based on everything we've heard, based on documents you provide us, based on what we hear from staff and parents, that kind of thing, from the survey, and we write this position description as a draft and get it to you to review. That's what, that is then posted on our website and on your website so that people can access it, they can see what people are looking for. We have people accessing our website all the time for those kinds of documents so they get a sense of what the person's, you know, the particular board is looking for. So, we would use all of that to create a profile based on that. We probably, I think, have the one from before, when we did it before, but we have to update that.
Sure.
But I would say from what Albert said, that if you have that kind of document, we can certainly make great use of that from your perspective, and then we can add in whatever we hear.
Right. Okay.
So, that would be fine. And then, we don't maybe have to spend as much time on that tonight and get to some of the other things, which will be helpful for us.
Yes. So, what do you guys think as a board as a good stepping off point since some time and effort has already been put into that document? What are your guys' thoughts on that?
Because I think it's going to change over time based on all of this input and what they hear from us tonight, and it's not something that we're solidifying tonight.
No, 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 no.
That we brought back to us, but I think that would be a good jumping off point, and that's something that we can send to you tomorrow.
That'd be fine. It's perfect, yeah.
Was that adopted or was that...
No, it wasn't adopted. It was part of our discussions when we were in closed session before working with Dr. Halfaker.
Right. I remember the document. I don't remember it being, Raymond, did I put it? Did you? I think it was something we came here.
Right.
But I don't know if we, I'm not sure it would say we put a whole lot of probative value on you, because I don't know if it represents the full consensus of the board as to how we rank all that, but it was something that we discussed.
And I'm not sure the ranking will be as important now as it might be when you get closer to the interview.
Exactly.
Right.
And you'd have more time to kind of discuss that part, I think.
Right.
But if, in general, the desired characteristics and qualities and all of that are pretty much okay, that's a good starting point for us.
Right.
And then, we'll have other input, obviously.
But it doesn't prevent, and I think there's some benefit to the board just talking about what you're looking for in leaders. What are those qualities that, you know, you have that person sitting there, leading this organization and helping to work with you. What do you think's important? Personal characteristics and professional backgrounds? Should they have been charter school experience? They have to have administrative experience. They have a degree, administrative degree, a doctorate, classroom teacher. So, I mean, those are things that it would be good for us to hear because when we begin to recruit, we're going to look for folks, individuals, candidates that match up with what you're asking for. So, we can take all that you have, but if you want to just have some roundtable discussion on it, it's very helpful.
I think based upon the experience that we've had, if we're jumping out of war and just kind of free-form conversation, which I think is great. I know it's a played-out word, but I think integrity becomes one of the most important things, and it's not just the integrity that they, in the general sense, but I think when it comes to a sense of reliability, that when they tell us they're going to do something, we know it gets done. When they tell our teachers they're going to do something, the teachers know they can depend upon that. We need that sort of open honesty, reliability, integrity that comes from somebody whose word really truly is their bond. And they may not give the best answer or the answer we want to hear back, but when we get that answer back, we know that we can trust that that's legitimately the answer.
Okay. And also, part of integrity is sharing all information from us, not hiding information. I think that's also part of that picture of integrity.
Good. Communicate, yeah. Open, communicate evenly and transparently with all board members.
Exactly.
Now, as a board, we have a bit of a reputation.
You have a reputation.
Fine. I'll wear the hat. I think somebody who is good at working with a board would be very helpful.
So, a track record of working with a board would be helpful in terms of real experience with it, not just observing what that would be like having done it?
Right.
And two things that we have talked specifically about in the past is making sure that they do have classroom experience as well as administrative experience. Personally, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but whether it's at the district or at a charter, but certainly they need to have been a classroom teacher as well as they need to have a proven track record as an administrator. The other part of that that I think is very important, we're a K through 8 school. I want somebody who's passionate about kids who are in K through 8, which means that they would have a track record in K through 8.
This is helpful. I mean, it begins to frame out what you're looking for, other things, other characteristics.
Well, I think we have a pretty colorful history. You're familiar with the OPA story?
Yeah.
And obviously, whoever comes here needs to be a little bit thick-skinned in that way. So, I don't really feel like this is a place to come and learn and develop your tradecraft. You might hone your tradecraft, but you need to show up.
Right.
With your A-game, all of you show up, so don't show up distracted, you know, with consulting arrangements or whatever else you have going on.
This is the focus for them.
This needs to be your primary focus.
Yeah, that's great.
So, we've, anytime you're fighting momentum, right? So, we had some momentum that I feel like was going in a particular direction, and we've gotten a handle on that a little bit, but you're still turning a big ship.
Right.
And we're still turning.
Right.
And so, that person's going to need to come in and grab a hold of that wheel and continue to turn, and it's not going to be, I'm not shy about saying, if you think you're going to come here and get an easy, cozy job, it's not here. It's not this job. And I think in the spirit of being fully forthcoming.
It's not a, you know, quite worked through that this is exactly what this board was looking for, but I think that it could be a conversation piece as part of this too.
Sure.
That's good. I think we should, after we kind of finish, we should walk through this at some point in time and just kind of confirm that. So, that's, thank you, Mr. Diaz. So, it's not going to be, it is not an easy position, and someone has to come with their best game. What about finances? Is that a piece of financial background? Is that important? I know that's been part of some of the issues.
Well, let's circle back on that for a second and put a finer point on this when we say difficulty. Well, I think there are certain organizations that have classifications of difficulty. They say, "Well, they're having financial problems. They're underfunded," as an example, or "They're having, you know, other issues," or "They're having programming issues. They need to develop their curriculum," things like that. I think our track record academically speaks for itself.
Right.
Frankly stunning, capable.
Yeah.
But there are a couple of other areas and not just one category that you're going to need to have some experience and some tenacity in to resolve. So, it's not just show up with one skill set. So, I think there's a level of roundedness that comes into this.
So, a little more well-rounded experience in terms of administration and knowledge of a whole system.
And relationships too.
Okay.
Authorizers, how is that relationship with staff, relationships between the campuses?
Right.
Yeah, related to that, I think a lot of the job is going to be repairing relationships, and I think whoever steps into this position is chosen, needs to be somebody that works well with teachers. I know that there's a sense sometimes that, "Wow, I'm done teaching. Now I'm an administrator." I would like somebody who actually still feels like they're an educator at heart.
All the time.
And listens to our teachers, involves them in decisions, has their back, because we're only the board. We're not on the campuses day to day. We're not as involved in that as they are.
Sure.
So, somebody who can come to us as an advocate for the teachers when it's appropriate and say, "Look, you really need to understand this issue and make the case when it's appropriate." The other challenge and blessing that comes with this job is the parents. They've been burned. They got burned when Chino closed. They've been burned by past promises that haven't been upheld. They've been burned by worrying about if the campuses are going to continue to exist.
Right.
But they're also an incredible asset. They will pour everything they have into a classroom, into the school, into fundraising, into supporting this organization.
Right.
But they've been burned. And so when you burn somebody who has that level of passion, you've got to repair that relationship. So somebody who is open to working with the parents and will listen to parents and communicate with them is going to be critical. If they do, the job will be all that much easier. If they don't, it'll be a horrible job.
Well, most of, having been superintendent, you know, ninety-seven percent is a relationship part of it. You can learn the other stuff, but if you can't do the relationship side of it and really develop quality relationships with the integrity and kinds of things you were talking about, that you're going to be in trouble.
Right. And bridge building, obviously, is a very important part of that, but we can't leave out the community. We need somebody who can bridge build in the community as well. You're a charter school, charter schools are under attack in California. You not only need parent support and teacher support, but you also need community support.
Right.
And you need to hire someone, we need to hire someone who's excited about building those relationships, who's excited about being involved in the community and being known in the community.
Right.
So I think that we would want a proven track record. We wouldn't want somebody coming in who says, yeah, I'll do that, I can do that. You want a proven track record, somebody who's done that.
Yeah.
Almost as a PR person, we've often joked that we have a great story to tell, but we're not very good at telling it. To Sanders' point, I think somebody who could get out there and brag about what we're doing and really draw attention to our successes would be helpful on all fronts.
Okay. Do you have something?
Oh, yeah, I mean, and I can jump in at any time. We've got the time to do it. When, you know, there's nothing that hasn't been shared so far, but I'm not, I'm not going, yep, that is something we absolutely need, that's something we absolutely need, that's something we absolutely need. So I don't want to repeat what they've added, I'm just going to continue to expand. To me, I think that charter experience, the lack of charter experience, they would have to come at this with, they've got so much of this to overshadow a lack of charter experience. So to me, that's a big component along with everything else. I think if they don't understand the heart of charters, which is the school choice, that understand the challenges that charters have already set is the fight, the bridge building in community, but the whole concept of how charters have to be presented differently and have to do things that school districts don't have to worry about. And understanding the nuances of the politics behind charters, I think, is key.
Do you think that charter school experience in California is particularly critical or does that matter? I know charters, how charters are done in other states is different.
It's different.
So it's not, so I just want to clarify, because you get people, I'm doing a search currently that is a K-12 district, but the high schools are charter schools. And so, but out-of-state charter folks who are looking at this do not have the same knowledge of California charter stuff, so it's...
And so it would be, I wouldn't say it would disqualify the candidate.
No.
But I would say that they would have to sell us harder, or sell me harder to, if they didn't have charter experience or they didn't have California charter experience. The dynamics of charters and authorizers.
Right.
Is, if you look at at least half our challenges, if not more, is maneuvering that. Understanding how, where that, you know, when you go to an authorizer with a, you know, please can we do this, and when you go to the authorizer is, no, we deserve this, you know, that the state has given us this authority. When you, and that relationship, it comes back down to relationships, I know you've heard it, you said it, you emphasized it. But it is, as boards change in the district that authorized you, in the county that authorized you, then understanding the dynamics between charters and school districts, and if they've walked both, if they've been on the district side and been on the charter side, to me, you know, if, back to the concept of a point scale system, that's significant.
Thanks.
Not to be contrarian, but I'm not, I wouldn't put as much weight on whether they came from in-state or out.
Okay.
There's so much variance within California, within the county and district to district, that somebody could be in a very pro-charter district and has smooth-sailed their whole career thus far and never had the problem with an authorizer, and you could have someone in the same county who's had a very difficult relation with the authorizer. So for me, the in-state, out-of-state's not as important.
Not as important.
What's more important is they have the charter experience.
Okay.
There's two ways also to look at charter experience. It's not just being an administrator and started, decided charter. We also have some very talented people out there who have been district people who are very pro-charter and actually are advocates for charters in their districts. And I'm not just talking about somebody that provides oversight. I'm talking about somebody who actually is a charter advocate, that would bring an incredible wealth of knowledge with them as well. So I wouldn't just throw that out. I think we need to consider everything. However, if you really study charters across this country, they are different animals.
Right.
They are entirely different. The ed code is the ed code when it comes to charters. You want somebody who truly understands the ed code because California's much different than New York. We look entirely different than New York. So that's something that we do want to be mindful of. And if we were to interview somebody out-of-state, I think we'd have to be very careful. And I think we'd have to make sure that our questions are geared in such a way that they could really hit the ground running in a California charter school.
And you always want to find out the motivation of someone.
Exactly, especially moving to California, yeah.
But charter schools are becoming more mainstream in many school districts, so you have leaders in the school district that have charters and are supportive of charters within their own school district.
Correct.
But I think we're getting a sense of it, that a good understanding of charter schools is important. California experience is really important for all the positions that we fill and that we recommend. We have brought people in from out-of-state, but it can be a steep learning curve, so it's just something to be aware of. But it shouldn't restrict us from recruiting someone from out-of-state, but they have to have certain characteristics to really be a strong candidate in a California pool. But I think it's a good conversation. Other thoughts? Personal characteristics or professional characteristics, experience that you're looking for?
There's something I'd like to add to, in regards to that. OPA has a style, OPA has an approach. OPA, their staff development, when they bring on a new teacher, is rigorous in teaching them the OPA way, the successful way. Our test scores and our student involvement and their, in our attendance rates prove that the OPA approach is, works. It's what, it's part of our success model. Obviously, if someone is coming from outside the organization, they don't know our model, but they need to be, we want them willing, or at least I would want them willing, to not expect to come in and say, oh, well, I know a better way, and just begin immediately to implement changes where changes don't need to be made.
So it's really willing to commit and really learn the organization and learn what has worked.
To me, yes, I think that's important.
Well, the MI is such an important part of what the school is, the multiple intelligences. So I think to Albert's point, we don't want somebody who's going to come in and look at this as a blank slate that they could completely rewrite.
Right.
But there's clearly opportunities to put a stamp on this just within that framework.
Sure. I remember when we did the search before, the multiple intelligence piece was a very big criteria. It was a big expectation that people really understood that and what that looked like in a school system.
That'd be a big plus in my book if someone came with MI experience.
Right.
Or at least familiar with and with what MI is all about.
And I think this is probably one of our most difficult areas, right? Because somebody can talk a good talk.
Sure.
And they can come in and say, you know, we really are committed to your charter. But then they come in and within a short time, it's like, okay, they're not committed to the charter. And that's going to be crucial, right? We have a charter for a reason, we need to live the charter. And that's why at every one of our regular board meetings, we have another lesson on what our charter says, because we need to know it. And so the person who is hired needs to absolutely buy in to what the charter says.
Is your, I forget, is your charter on your website? I don't think it is.
I don't believe the whole charter's on the website.
Because it would be something we'd want candidates to be able to access.
Okay.
Maybe we can, as appropriate, provide it to you to...
Right.
Okay, you're, you know, you seem to be a viable candidate, we'd like you to read the charter.
Yeah.
Be familiar with it.
It's always good for candidates to actually read that, really understand it.
Right.
And that's actually part of when we actually get to the interview process, is someone really sharing with you what they understand about the charter and about OPA and its work and multiple intelligence. So you'll, we'll be doing a lot of the vetting. You'll also do that vetting once you think you have quality candidates to dig deeper into this, because you have to really have confidence that they have the ability to lead this organization. And we'll spend whatever time through this process to make sure you have that with those final candidates and ultimately the final candidate.
Well, in those additional categories, I don't see them here on this paper, but I would put candor on there and courage. And part of that is because you've got to have the internal fortitude to have a tough conversation. And so we want to hear all things good, we want to hear if there's things that are spicy, if there's something tricky that we need to navigate and we need to hear about it. If there's something that we, you know, need to change, then I don't want them to just come in here and say, oh, I'm just going to maintain course and speed on everything that's going on here, because I feel like part of what we're, part of what we want them to do is come in and continue driving us in a great direction. And again, we're in the process of that turn, but we've got a lot of turn left.
Well, I think in any organization too, you can't just rest on your laurels. You've been successful, but that doesn't continue success unless you work at it, right?
Right.
You keep pushing on that, keep trying to strive for that better and better.
Yeah, well, keep in mind, we had three campuses.
Right.
Now we have two, one up for renewal. So you've got to show up with your A-game, right? We've got some work to do.
Right.
And part of that is to look vigorously at where we are. And I hope we have some great conversations and we're going to have some conversations that are a little bit tough, but we need to have those conversations.
Right.
At the time in which they're looking to begin, based on the tentative timetable, we're submitting our renewal petition.
For which?
For our campus.
SOC.
So timeline-wise, they have to be ready to hit the ground running.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right. I think there's some really good points too about appreciating the history and the work being done here and accepting that, but also saying, how can we make it better? How do we build on that? That's what I think you're hearing. Someone doesn't have to come in and change everything, but they have to appreciate it, understand it, and then build on the good work that's been done in the district.
And it goes to your point about the PR, you know, you took some hits, obviously. And so how do you rebuild that trust and expectations that allows you to highlight the good work that has been done, right? But counters to some of the negative things you've been hit with.
And who is the audience for a marketing, you know, that you want, you want to be viewed as a great charter providing great education? Who's that audience? Is it the school district's parents?
Yes, it is, it is, the authorizer has to, they have to love and believe in you. The community has to support you. And the existing parents whose children you are responsible for have to, you know, believe that you are capable of delivering the quality education that they dream of for their children. And the prospective parents who are looking to come in.
Watching, yeah.
And are listening to the community around you. You know, one of the hits I remember hearing about, now that we're talking about hits, is, oh, you know, there was a window of time where it was, oh, you go to OPA, yeah, I've heard of them. Then it became a, oh, you go to OPA, I've heard about them. And we're starting to turn it back around, but that's part of PR is, oh, you go to OPA, I've heard about them.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Any other personal or professional qualities that you can think of? We've covered quite a bit, but anything else you want to add?
I will add in, by the way, what's on here, just so we'll have that as part of that.
Is it, gentlemen, is there anything on that that you would feel that you would be interested in putting yourself down as a no-on? So that they get the feedback on the form as well if they're going to add it?
Well, I mean, I don't know if I, when I look at the second section down there under expertise, I don't know that I would put, make one-eighth of staff supervision and evaluation the exact same weight as experience with GATE and special ed. So I'm just not sure of all the particulars. I mean, is it a great...
I don't know that you need to worry about that now until you get to an interview timeframe when you're saying, how am I weighing this?
Yeah, and you're going to help us put together a matrix, I assume, right?
Yeah, we help that and we'll help you with the questions and all that part of it too.
But Raymond, do you remember, we are a full inclusion model too.
Right.
And part of what makes OPA, the multiple intelligence and the full inclusion is, you know, is that GATE component.
Right.
Or not the GATE component, excuse me, the special ed component.
Without considering it in terms of a point value, but just simply, you know, criteria qualifications, as we here heard you, I mean, these seem pretty consistent with what you might be looking for in a new leader.
Yeah, but I'm cautious that if they don't have minimum five years successful teaching experience, they have four years, so they're out. I don't know that that would be an automatic exclusion.
Right.
So some of those very specific, hard, crispy stops.
That's good. So we're looking at classroom experience, we're looking at administrative experience. We can, and I think that's important.
And maybe you can take out some of the hard stops.
Yeah, I think that's...
But the spirit of this is still good.
My concern is the waiting. For example, conference presenter and/or published. Not all conferences are the same, not all publications are the same. And to put that as the same amount of points as staff supervision and evaluation, I think, is...
Take off the weights.
I think for our purpose, we're looking at this character, I mean, I see things here, integrity, transparency, honesty, trustworthiness, you've said all things, this is being reinforced through that, collaboration. So, you know, unless there's something here that just, I like the hard stops. We're not talking about five years, we're not talking about a doctorate degree, but we're looking at someone that has classroom experience, that has hopefully some charter experience, that has administrative experience, that understands supervision and evaluation. This is helpful to us in building a profile. We'll get it back to you, you'll have a chance to look at it. We just want to find out if there's anything here that says, no, we don't like it. But it sounds like this is acceptable. What about, I think we want to talk about either strengths or the challenges.
Right. I think it'd be helpful for us, for you, and you started a little bit, but just what do you see as the real strengths of this organization, the strengths of the programs you offer? Because when we talk to candidates, one of the things they want to know is sort of like, so why would I go to work there, right? What's going to say I should work in this place? So I think those kinds of things are real helpful for us as we talk to candidates. So tell me, from your perspective, why would, what do I say to a candidate about why they'd come to work here?
Anybody want to tackle that before I do?
Well, I think it's going to be, I mean, to start off with academics and say, that's the underhanded pitch here. It'd be hard for us to find a school that's ready to outperform us, you know, on a level playing field.
Right.
It'd be very, very difficult. So I think academically, we've got that recipe dialed in. I also feel like the issues that we have are known. We're not talking about rocket science here, this is mastery of the fundamentals. This is about identifying the groups that need to be heard, that need to be, you know, brought into the conversation. You know, this isn't, this is just leadership 101 stuff here. So you can show up, be really good, show up with great tradecraft, come out the other side and have, it's not going to be an easy job to begin with, but I think this could turn into quite an easy job in a short order, right? If we can get a handle on some of these.
Yeah.
Right. Not a big turnaround, we don't have 10 campuses that are all out of sorts and a bunch of unknowns. So I think we can pretty much list out the things that you're going to struggle with, and I don't think you're going to find out, find other things that aren't on that list.
Yeah.
So I think there's some known variables in there that'll be helpful.
Okay.
And then, and then come out the other side and really, and be that publisher, be that speaker, be that person. So you can't show up here being on the speaker circuit because you're going to need to be loyal to this moment for a while. But I think on the other side of that, in, you know, some years, short order, you can be out on that speaker circuit talking about what you did and having that academic thing is your, this is why you get invited to all the cool parties, is look at your academics.
Yeah. Yeah.
We've got ridiculously talented teachers and academic leadership.
Okay.
The results don't happen without them, and the results have happened under very difficult circumstances. Obviously, you know our history.
Right.
That they still are here and they buy into the vision, they buy into the charter, and they continue to deliver, makes it a lot easier position, I would imagine, because you're not stepping into a situation where you've got to figure out who to weed out. And you've got to figure out, on a whole, do I have teachers here that'll make it happen? Do you have teachers here that will make it happen? We need someone to step in and run it on the admin side.
Yeah.
Right.
And you know, a quick shout out to all the teachers who.
Are still here.
Do this every day, and even though funky things are going on and we get all wonky up here.
Yeah.
You guys stay loyal to that, keep rowing the boat, keep that academic thing. And this is what we deliver semester after semester, trimester after trimester, is just incredible results, just incredible results.
Yeah.
And so, thank you so much for doing that.
Yeah, whoever gets this job is going to get to step in and lead an incredible group of teachers. I mean, that, that might be one of the easiest pitches to give.
Yeah.
Right. We, Peggy and I were talking, we do, we've done 100 searches between us and we've never seen this many, this many teachers in a, in a meeting like this. And we're talking about districts with 20, 30, 40, 50,000 students. So more teachers here than we've ever seen in one of the community input sessions that we've done with, with the board. So it is a real compliment to, to their commitment and to the family organization that feel, feeling that you built here.
And when you talk to the stakeholders, when you talk to the parents, when you talk to the teachers, when you talk to the staff, I think that's when this is all going to jump out and tell you what's special about us. You know, I think that that's going to be.
And we will be asking every group we talk to, anybody we talk to, the three same things. What are the characteristics, qualities, experiences?
Right.
What are the strengths?
Why are you here?
And, and then what are the challenges that they're facing?
Yeah.
And that's what the survey does too.
Right.
And we find the online survey has been really successful, particularly for parents who can't get out at night or can't come to meetings like, you know, like a lot of people can't. And frankly, it's easier to sit at your desk at home and do it online rather than come to meetings usually, so, yeah. Other, other strengths, other things about this organization that are really an attractive place to work in?
I mentioned it earlier, but we do have incredible parents too. They're here as well. It's too bad you couldn't have been here on the table. We have like a living museum, or we had one of our holiday events, or Blackwell's, or some of these events that's going on, and you could see the level of devotion they have.
Yeah.
And they're standing through, through the thick and the thin too.
Yeah.
And that's a testament to them. They will make this job easier.
Yeah.
For whoever takes that job.
Because they're so supportive.
If they, if that person meets the criteria for delivering to them.
Right.
So what makes this a difficult job?
I think our, our history, so because we have a history, you, you're viewed, whatever you do, is viewed, viewed that, through that filter.
Yeah.
Right? So, so you can't just be transparent, you need to be super transparent.
Yeah.
So it's not impropriety, it's the appearance of impropriety. So you can't just worry about keeping your side of the street clean, you need to keep the whole neighborhood clean.
Right. That's good.
And I think you, earlier you really kind of alluded to rebuilding the relationships across the board, whether that's parents or community or, or authorizers. To rebuild some of those is going to be a challenge. I mean, and especially you come in new, you don't have the relationships, you have to start. That's a challenge.
And I think that kind of circles back, not only being a good relationship builder, but having the, the experience. When, you know, two professionals are in a room and they've never met each other, they size each other up pretty darn quickly. And the, being able as a, to, to speak from experience, from I've been in your shoes. You walk, you two can walk into any school district and because you've been in the, the position of that superintendent, there is an immediate bond.
Yeah.
There is an immediate understanding that, okay, I need to take him or her seriously because they have been successful superintendents, just like I have, in that, that, that role. So I think the, the experience along with the ability to build relationships, those go hand in hand.
Right.
To circle back on what you said, what makes OPA special, I would encourage you, do we have another parent information meeting coming up anytime soon? Next week? If, if it fits in your schedule, maybe you guys would want to be a fly on the wall on a parent information meeting. Listening to OPA teachers sell OPA to prospective parents. Showing them, eight years ago, a year before my children were even ready to go to kindergarten, I sat through a parent information meeting. And my wife and I were in the back of the room, just kind of welling up, just, just thinking about getting, being able to give our children that opportunity.
All three of them at one time?
Well, we didn't know yet. Well, that's right, that's right. No, we didn't know yet, I'm saying, all three at one time. But it was just the, the program being offered, the, the extra, the music, the, the taekwondo, the foreign language, the, the university theme, the.
And you need, yeah, so you know too, the last time we did it, one of our first meetings was at the school in Capo District School, and, and the school was in session. So it was, it was really a lot of fun. I mean, you could see the kids, you could, you know, the whole thing. It was, it was a really fun thing to watch.
Yeah.
And you get that energy.
Yeah.
One of the challenges we have, and it's become more of an issue, is how do we compensate our teachers in order to make this a competitive job?
Yeah.
When you look across the campus, seems at least to me, we have a lot of teachers that are at the stage where they're young and they're building, they have young families. And as much as they love this campus and they love being here and they love what the school does and what it means, more money speaks. And at that stage in life, it often screams, and you have a very difficult choice to make.
Right.
We need to figure out how to compensate and pay our teachers competitively, so that when Irvine's opening four new schools, we don't become their primary poaching grounds.
Right. Right.
And I remember that was kind of an issue the last time we talked.
Yeah, it was even back then. Training teachers, providing the great staff development, they're just wonderful, and then other districts come in and scoop them up.
And I, and I know it's a budget issue, but that's got to stop being an issue. So whoever steps in has got to understand that and help us come to that solution.
Let me ask you a question, because I saw it a little bit on the list about the budget and fiscal. Are you challenged with that? Do you have, are you thinking about developing new sources of funding? Is that part of what you're looking at? Maybe that's what goes to what you were asking or saying about building community relationships.
Well, I would say that there, because we went from three schools to, budget became more of a concern. Because we had some fiscal mismanagement in the past.
Right.
Budget is on a lot of people's minds and ensuring that the leadership puts things in place and has an understanding of what is necessary to run a healthy school. Now, and through all of that, we had healthy reserves far and above what the, what was required, but people asked a legitimate question. We asked a legitimate question. What would, what more could we have done had we had been more fiscally responsible? What more programs could we have offered?
Right.
So having a clear understanding. But yes, when you said about, you know, community outreach, we do the, you know, the, the family night at this pizzeria or that McDonald's, or, you know, go eat here and go do this and that, but hey, I, I would think it would be not a required item, but I would see it as a nice feather in their cap if they came to the table with the experience of, of helping to generate funding streams and helping to bring additional funds to do additional programs to the, to the school.
Okay. Any other particular challenges that jump out in your mind at this point?
The reason communication, I think, shows up a lot as a theme is partly it's been a failure, but there was a vacuum of communication, I think, for a long time. And in that vacuum, people started to hypothesize what was really happening. Sometimes they were educated guesses, sometimes people got pretty close, other times there were some rampant rumors. And I think somebody who can step in and, I think there's been a lot of progress on that front, but there's still, you know, the need for somebody who can be very, I think Sandra used the word transparent, I think that's the right word. And it's, it's a proactive transparency to the greatest extent possible to get in front of the audiences and parents and teachers and to communicate to them exactly what's going on to our authorizers, so that we don't create that vacuum that gets populated with all the worst suppositions about what's going on.
Right. Right.
And I think on the other side of that too, is being able to shut down rumor speculation. I think it's not just a result of a vacuum, sometimes it's also the result of personalities. And I think that being a leader who's very engaged, really knows their community of, of teachers and staff, and, and be willing to go out and be present, ask questions, understand what's going on, I think is, they need to be curious, right?
Right.
They really need to be curious.
Where is the executive director housed?
At the corporate office in Corona.
In Corona, okay.
Okay. Okay, good.
What's in Corona for now?
Our lease runs through the end of 2019.
Okay. So you have a contract with that facility, okay.
All right. And so I, my personal philosophy on that hiring idea is, because I like to give candidates the, the good, the bad, and all of it, the whole story. And so, thick mat, right, that's real.
Yeah. I read it.
District attorneys interested in things that are going on, that's real.
Right.
And so, you don't want to scare somebody, you just want to give.
But they need to know.
You've got to know.
Yeah.
Because it's, if it's not a conversation the day before, the day of your hire, I promise you, it's going to be a conversation. So best to know what you're walking into ahead of time. And maybe somebody who, I don't want to say has to have experience with that, but, you know, if they're, if they, if they do have a little bit of a track record stepping, stepping into something that's a little more colorful, and I want to row this, this, this teacher compensation boat a little further, thank you for bringing that up, Joseph, but if you have a company, if you have a company that delivers spectacular results, right, you see of companies out there, and your company and what you produce is just incredibly wonderful, so much more so than everybody else, should you just pay and should your total compensation, right? I mean, let's be creative about what that is. It's not just about dollars and cents, but let's really put some thought into it and not just show up with, you know, compensation experience, but get parties involved and let's talk about that, to say, how can we, what can we do to be that employer of choice? And does that mean that we need to subsidize Champion Village or make Champion Village, right? Because if you've got younger families or younger people who are having children, I mean, what a great package to be, I'd bring my children to work and I'd drop them off at Champion Village, do my job, I grab my child and go home. I mean, I'm just throwing things out there as discussion points.
Have some creativity around that.
Have some creativity.
Innovative thinker, yeah.
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 Innovative and strategic thinker.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
And so what's your feeling about that? And I'm looking to you, not to put you guys on the hot seat here, but to, to say, we don't, I don't know what I don't know, right? And as, and I want my doctor to talk to me about the brain surgery procedure, but I want them to tell me how this is really going to go. What do you recommend? What are some things that you feel like we need, knowing the OPA story that you do? Anything that we're not talking about that we should be talking about that you can think of?
In terms of?
Characteristics, things that we need to be looking for that.
Well, I like what you also said about understanding the thick mat and the past history and district attorney. You know, the person coming in here has to like the challenge and be up to it. It, it, you know, it's not someone who's a, you know, wilting violet here, someone who looks at this and says, I like that. That doesn't scare me away. That draws me to it. The teachers, the excitement here. And someone who really wants to build upon some good work. I mean, that's what I think we're hearing in a person. I think it's going to take someone who has some level of experience of having done this in some form and not having to say what they might be doing. So I think you're talking about an experienced leader and a fairly bold person, but someone who's very sensitive to what has transpired here, understands it, and can move past it. And so this has been, I mean, for me, and I think Peggy too, a really helpful conversation, and it's been pretty inspiring, because this is a great program, you need a great leader here, and someone who isn't coming to a status quo position. And there are some status quo leaders. Yeah? Hey, I won't change it, I won't rock the boat, and it'll be as, as good as what I believed is when I came. And that's not, I don't, here, that's good enough. So I, I think that we're sensing the kind of person that you're looking for, the kind of leader that you're looking for. And I think someone who can also work with this board, which I don't think is necessarily just anybody can do that.
You can put that on under challenges.
Yeah, I think, I think it's been, you know, you, there's some issues there, but there's nothing wrong with that. But someone who has the experience.
You're relatively new, apparently, and so, you know, one of the things that somebody has to be able to do is help, to help develop the board and be a team of people together, you know, promoting this program. So it can't be this person and you, you over here. I mean, it's got to be a team of people who are really on the same page. I mean, one of the things we do find about searches is it is a way for the board to come together in agreement on things. And when you pick a person that you really are going to love, then you've got to work together to make it work. It can't be that person trying to figure out how to navigate everything else. It's got to be a team effort of, man, we're in this together, we know our challenges, we know our strengths, but we've got to work together and be really a good quality group of people together, because that person can't be successful with that, without that, really. I mean, I've been a superintendent, I was superintendent for 14 years, and I was blessed for probably 95% of it to have a great, great boards who were, really worked well together and who really were understanding of, they had a role and I had a role, and, and came together as a team of people to, to promote what we did. And we had some very successful runs in both of my districts, as, as you did. And so I think that's, but I think a search can really help with that. And one of the things we always say to boards is, once you hire, you need to do a governance workshop, you need to spend time about how are we going to work together? What's our goals? What's our real vision? Because once you hire, it's not done, right? It's just not done. You got a lot, you got stuff to do.
If I can go back to one of the, I think, the opportunities here, is whoever's hired as our executive director, they're going to get to build out their leadership team.
Right.
Ooh, we want to hire a business officer, we've, we've got an interim managing director. This is the opportunity for somebody to come in and say, you know what? I know somebody who's got a great business background, who fits the requirements for a school CBO.
Right.
This is the opportunity to get that person, because I trust her and I know her analysis.
Right.
And I know somebody who's a great, I, I can build this team that'll allow me, so when they get going, they're not, they're going with their strengths, their team, their people, and.
That's a, that's a very, by the way, a very attractive draw, is to have somebody who, who has a chance to build some of the team.
Well, we, we actually didn't have consensus on that when that came up in the past. So to speak to that, yes, it would be attractive, at the same time, there is concern about the.
Too much new.
Too much new, not enough of those who have, you know, bringing in the experience of, of, of those who are, who have been living the OPA program for three, five, eight years. So though, and, and this is one of those you can kind of put on your list of, well, some of the board members thought this and some of the board members thought that, which you're going to have a list of that.
That's fine, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not, as an individual, convinced that I do want a, an entirely new administrative team.
But I think you have some flexibility of allowing the person to help decide that.
Oh, absolutely. You would want them to have some flexibility.
They get to kind of assess where the team is, say, this works, maybe not for me. I mean, I think you've got that option. It's not like you have to start all.
You would never want to tie their hands.
No, no.
And say, I'm sorry, you can't. Something else that, I know you, I don't know if it made it to your list, but you mentioned it, so I want to make sure that, yeah, the board management, board development. And speaking of what we're talking about in terms of boldness, of not looking for status quo, at least speaking personally, I believe that this program deserves replication. I believe that more than, you know, our current, what, what number are we at right now? now? Because I keep wanting to say, you know, 2,500 students, but what number are we at right now between the two schools?
Five ninety-five here and eight oh five at the other.
Okay. So about 1,400 students. There's only 1,400 children that are benefiting from this program. I believe this program deserves replication and I believe that more students deserve an improved education. So I'd like to, I, I would like to see a, an executive director that is, is anxious to open with and maybe even has experience with replication.
Growing, growing the program.
Is there a capacity at both sites for Morse?
No, I'm saying...
No, no, I know that, but are, is there capacity for Morse students at each site or you're probably not right? Okay.
Got a pretty good waitlist.
Yeah, I would suspect, yeah.
But you know, to, to this board's credit, you know, as we sit here, 90 to 95% of what you said, you all agree with. I mean, as you sit here talking about the issues of, of the future of this district and the strengths and the challenges and even the qualities, I see way, way, way more agreement than disagreement. That's a positive sign. It's a positive sign. The board can work and, and I think does want to work together on behalf of the children of this, this community. And you need an executive director to help you with that. You've been at quite a disadvantage at the board.
Sure have.
Quite a disadvantage, oh, you have. It's really hard, you know, to have, not have solid leadership working with you consistently and you've had the turnover, so...
And you have Mrs. doing four jobs or something.
Yeah, I got, she's been great, by the way.
She was very helpful.
I think we want to try to shift to other things, if that's okay. We're going to give you the opportunity to give us more input and we'll give you feedback on this. We want to talk about the timeline and groups.
Yeah, first, let's talk, we want to talk about some, some people we need to meet with. So for obvious reasons, we would want to meet with your staffs, right? We would be at the schools. I live in San Clemente. I can be at the school down there and meet with staff after school or whatever and get their input. Obviously, we have, we can have parent information type things, you could, that kind of thing. But are there particular, in addition to parents and staff, that you would want us to spend time with? An online survey can be done by anybody, that can be community. They don't have to have kids here, they don't have to have anything. It's doesn't, that's totally open. And that, by the way, is on both our, it's on your website, not ours.
So parents, should we be meeting with parents?
Certainly, we've got some advisory councils that we'd probably be a good idea for you to meet with.
Okay.
And those advisory councils are made up of some parents and some staff members as well.
So maybe we can get that list from Lisa. Can you, do you have that list available to, okay?
And I usually do a better job of reminding, but Dennis, if you wouldn't mind, bring your microphone a little closer.
I will.
Because we've got a pretty significant contingent of people who are watching and listening from home.
Good.
Yep. And so that's our PJ pajama contingent. I want to be sure that the PJ contingent cannot...
We're all jealous we're not home.
We are jealous.
We're not home.
But we have snickerdoodles here, just so PJ knows.
Okay.
So the staffs.
Definitely staffs.
Parents, advisory groups, we have the online survey.
Probably doesn't hurt to talk to honor society, maybe? I mean, they're a big part of what we do on the campus. Our honor societies.
Okay.
And what they do on the campuses, they're part of what makes the school unique. I think that would be good to talk to them.
And Lisa, would this be like a town hall kind of thing? I mean, is this, this seems significant enough to, to have, be a town hall topic so that when we do town halls, that we invite people to come in and talk about that? Like, what is it that they think?
So what we, we do on our timeline typically is we would spend, whatever, it might be half a day or whatever, on the campus with staff or people, advisory councils, that kind of thing. And then we typically do an open parent forum or open forum. That doesn't have to be just parents, that could be community members, et cetera. And we can easily do that at both school sites, so, and that's usually, we usually do it around five, five-thirty because frankly, once people go home, they don't come back out. And we, so we kind of try to catch them on their way home from work or something like that. But it's, it's a good way for anybody who wants to come and just be heard. We just listen, we do the same thing, basically, what do you want? You know, what's the challenges, what's that kind of thing? And so we create a pretty open way of, usually a staff site here would announce it. And so it goes out to your community and parents, et cetera, and so they can come when they want and we just sit and listen and get all the notes and the same kind of thing. We would be doing that, when you look at, we talk about our timeline, kind of have that set fairly close.
I'm not sure about the, I think you might have an interesting conversation if you talk to our authorizers and got sort of an idea because they've been act, acted, liaised with us for however many years, each of the campuses respectively, and sort of seen, you know, they might provide a distant third-party perspective on where we as campuses have done well and where we may be...
I assume you have a contact person specifically that we could get from?
From both, from both districts.
Sure.
That's a great idea.
Okay.
That's good.
Yeah.
We will, we can work with Lisa to flush that out, get it to you so you see it, if there's any clues you think we've left off or individuals. We usually do it in groups, like the teacher group or the authorizer group or the parent evening. We also sometimes will do individual. There may be one person, a past, you know, that you want us to meet with. So just think about that and, you know, we're here for...
We'll get that.
Plenty of time to do that.
Right.
Then, once we have taken your input, all the input from the stakeholders, the online survey, we pull that all together and present you with that report so you get a chance to see not just what you said, but what other people, other stakeholders have said about OPA. That includes the, the online survey. And we'll craft a position description that fits that. You'll approve it and then we recruit off of that.
So give us, give me a little bit more with that. So we currently have a, a, a job description.
Right.
So does this differ from that?
It's a little different in the sense that it's more of a summary. So we would want your job description available to us so we could post it for cap candidates. So for example, I've done assistant superintendent searches where there's a specific job description. We take that and plus, put it on our website. So we would use both. But the position description is really the thing that sort of does the summary of all that and highlights really the most current input.
Okay.
Okay? So it's really what's now happening. So you may have written a position descri, that job description eight years ago.
But now actually it was approved within the last year.
Okay, okay, then that's good too.
But that'll be great.
Yeah.
But this will be a, we'll use them both. This will be a position profile because you will see, and the candidates will see what you have said this evening in different words. We want a courageous person, transparent, a communicator. So it's written in a way that these leaders will see, okay, this is where OPA is today and this is the kind of person that we're looking for, the, the board is looking for. So both of those will be important, but it, it won't substitute for your position description, but it'll be the profile that we recruit off of.
The other thing it does is, is sort of us, the themes that emerge, if you will, from the various input sessions. So you start to see like seven things that sort of rise to the top from the different groups. And, and that's, in our position description, that's what we really try and focus on. Your job description will be a supplement, will be supplemental to this too, but it's kind of that timeframe of here we are right now and these are the things that the consensus was, if you will, of what the most important things are right now.
Most of our candidate, or the, when, when we do the searches, the candidates won't put their application in until they read our profile because it will be as if they were in this meeting or those other meetings that we're going to have. It'll be cleaned up and all of that. But they really get a sense now of what the challenges are, what the strengths are, what you're looking for. And so the two match up well. So anyways, you'll get a chance to see that and you'll give your approval on it and then we post it on our website along with your position description and then we begin the recruitment. Or we'll be recruiting before then, but that really is the starting point.
What do you do actively? I know that at the beginning of our discussion, you did mention about talking to different people in different districts, leaders. One of the problems with that, of course, is also wanting to get rid of somebody, right? And then sometimes they'll say, well, I think, I think so-and-so would be a good match for you. And they want to hold on to obviously the people they've developed and the people that they really want. So do you have any other resources out there in the community that you use other than educational leaders to help ferret out the, this person?
So when we do the reference checking, we ask for the candidates to give us three letters of recommendation, right? Obviously, they're going to hopefully be good letters, that would be typical. They also give us five other contacts, but we also go beyond that through our partners that we have around the state to dig deeper in that and find out more from county superintendents, from other dis, people who are in the community. It could be a police chief, it could be a variety of things. So we try to be sure we're as thorough about all those background checks and we're very...
I'm talking about something separate. I'm talking about more like a headhunter, right? Really getting out there and maybe we're not seeing the quality applicants that we want.
Right.
Do you ever play a role where you really get out there and you look who's out there and say, oh, yeah, I've heard a lot of things about this person.
Yeah, absolutely.
They haven't applied.
Absolutely.
They sound like a good match.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, no, we, we pick up the phone and, and make those phone calls ourselves. For instance, Dr. Winston and I, Peggy and I, going to a Southern California superintendent meeting of 25 leading superintendents across the southern part of California. They also have a group in the north. So we'll be at that meeting tomorrow. But you would be surprised. We'll talk to those leaders and maybe a superintendent from any, any number of districts and say, you know, we've got this opening, let's talk about it, you know, I've heard about this individual. Those superintendents are really anxious to help promote leaders. And it really isn't the case we want to get rid of somebody because they know us so well. We're, we're colleagues, they're, they're not going to do that to us. So we talk about that and say, this is a unique circumstance. Who's waiting for this opportunity? And so we don't want someone who's wanting to leave something. We want someone who wants to come to this. And so we do that.
Okay.
And our relationships with, with leaders across the state allows us to have those frank conversations.
Okay.
And they promote, they promote, they're good people. That's what, that's what good leaders do.
They don't want, they don't really want to stand in their way.
If it's a promotional opportunity.
Yeah. So let's focus a little bit on the timeline. You should, you have, I think, this? Do we have that? Do you each have one of those?
Yes.
Okay. So here's what we started to sort of flesh out and help us think about this. So we're here tonight on January 11th. We're going to start talking about meeting with your staff and community and we're looking at February, the early part of February right now, February 1st or 2nd. Now, 2nd is a Friday, so that's not an easy day for evening things or anything like that. But, but we're thinking pretty early on in February that we would want to get out and start talking to staff. And part of the challenge is we're coming up, not next week, but the week after, to the superintendent's symposium, which is actually a good tool for us to be at. We go to, it's a statewide meeting of superintendents and we do a little recruiting and talking to people about positions that are out there. And that's the following weekend. So the rate after that, the week after that, we would be back, you know, come back, spend some time on the campuses and do that sort of thing. We would, once we have the, you know, other lists and names from like on the advisory committees, councils and stuff like that, we would sort of set that schedule up. So that's kind of our timeframe right now, unless there's something that you've got going on that one of those two dates would be a real conflict for, like you've got to, you know, schools close that day or something like that, we would try and work with that.
Lisa, is February 1st or 2nd anything that strikes you as major conflicts or for that day? It doesn't involve the board. We really meet, you know, individually with, with these groups and then evening meeting too. So we probably would have that on February 1st if there isn't any, you know, the day of February 1st and the evening of February 1st and maybe part of February 2nd.
Well, I think you've got the, but you got SV, their advisory council meets on the 18th next week and then February 8th, I believe, February 8th and then March 8th.
Okay.
Right after that. So if there would be a way, that might, yeah, you might be able to go there and meet with the advisory council as well as other staff members.
So why don't we do this? Why, why don't we work with Dr. Hall?
Okay.
And, because we're local, so if we have to jump and we'll do that meeting on, on February 8th, but have other meetings on February 1st or whatever the case might be if there's something next week, we can do that. So...
And it may be that we're, we do the, the other school first and we're there and then we come back. It should, we have that flexibility, like since we are so local, it's easy for us.
Yes, please work with Dr. Hall.
So then we look at, you know, at the advertisements and we'll work with the charter school journals and also with EdCal. And, and Lisa, we also will probably look to see, do you, do you use EdJoin too? So also want to talk with you about EdJoin where people can apply on EdJoin, they still go through us afterwards, but...
We do that.
We're looking at probably February 5th through the 12th, some, some advertisement. But the date we're looking at closing would be March 5th. That's flexible, but that seemed like the right date based upon the input and the advertisements.
And at that point, all the applications come to us, of course, and we then start all the reference checking and screening and all those kinds of things.
And then we have to review all those applications, vet everyone, do the thorough reference checking, get it compiled. And so we're looking at a date, this is flexible and this is why your calendars, we just looked at March 29th, but we can, it's about a two or three hour meeting.
Closed session.
With just the board in closed session.
How are you picking these dates? Are you looking at our availability or are you just kind of picking?
We're asking about your availability.
We're just asking you whether you're available. We tried to come up with a timeframe that allows us to close a certain period of time and get you, someone selected.
Got it. So rather than us, I mean, you could probably connect with Jennifer.
Okay.
And, and Lisa, and they can dial those dates in for you and just say, hey, let's go three days.
Is that better for you?
Three days before, four days after.
All right.
We just need to get back to her in a timely manner.
Right.
Well, but they might be able to combine it with the, with the board meeting too.
Well, this is kind of one of those...
I'd rather not do that.
It's kind of one of those meetings that needs to be on its own.
Focus on this.
And I'll, and I'll tell you why. It is a good three hours typically. And unless you want to start like at two o'clock in the afternoon and try and finish by, before a board meeting or something, that gets pretty tough. So we typically go like a five to eight, so you allow yourself, we have, get to have dinner, we go through all the applications. You, we'll help you prepare questions, we'll do all of that and it's about a three-hour meeting typically.
So the week she's proposing is spring break at our campuses. Are you guys planning on doing anything with your families that...
And that's what we didn't know at that time, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
From that week. Well, that's why we're asking the question. Let's vet that out right now and, and look at the week before, the week after. But the week before, we have a board meeting. So you want to look at the week after?
So maybe let me, before you decide that, if we, just to play this out a little bit, if we were doing what, kind of just that original suggestion, we were thinking you would interview in early April, like April 7th. That means the person could start before June. I don't know if that's a need. So if, if, it's kind of, I think, a little bit of, if you'd like to, we can move that March 29th to the following week when you're not, spring break's over, I would assume.
It's probably a better idea.
Okay.
Gives flexibility to our board and his family.
I've just been informed I have no spring break plans, so...
So it's just you, Raymond?
Unless we're going to go hang out, do something cool.
What, what would be a date that week after spring break? What day of the week would work? We, we would need two, three hours with you in that five-day timeframe.
We tend to meet on Thursdays.
Okay.
So generally, we like to try to keep...
We're looking at April 5th.
April, April 5th?
Well, April 5th.
But I don't know.
I can do it, but it's my kid's birthday.
Oh, that's not good then.
But, hey, priorities are priorities.
No, 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 that's not good.
Okay.
We're family, right?
Okay, then, four, third, four, three, four, four are both. So Tuesday or Wednesday work for me too.
And for me, all you have to do is just tell me what day to be there.
So is your spring break the 26th through the 20th?
I have a few minutes in mind.
Or 30th, is that what spring break is?
Yes.
Okay.
Other than April.
So four, three, four, four, does that work, Gus? Either one of those?
So April 3, April 4, April 5, in the evening, late afternoon.
Yeah, that works, works for me.
The calendars appear open for the school sites.
Okay. So what, what day of the week is best? Mr. Diaz, you have a birthday, you have three birthdays actually. So which day?
I would prefer either the Tuesday or the Wednesday and I'm good with either one of those. If, if I was the only holdout for the Thursday, I'd make it work.
April 3 or April 4?
Tuesday or Wednesday? Does it matter?
Generally.[1615.23]
Wednesday's better.
Wednesday's better.
April 4?
April 4. Now, and this is, so now you've selected the candidates. Then we have to contact the candidates, set up a time, you know, they have, some will have travel plans. So generally, it's going to be 10 days after that. So if that's a Tuesday, we generally do this on a Saturday. Doesn't have to be a Saturday, but it wouldn't be the following, the next Saturday, but the following Saturday.
April 14th.
The 14th. And the Saturday is usually done because there are no schools in session, there isn't anybody around, it's a quiet environment. You can, it takes almost the entire day from 8 to 5 to go through this. If you have five, four, or five candidates, it's a full process. So how does that Saturday?
April 14th. After our last experience, I think that a Saturday's a very good idea.
Saturday's a what?
A good idea.
Saturday's a good idea? Okay.
So April 14th. So you interview the finalists, you identify the final candidate, and then you would make a determination to select that individual pending a site visitation, if the board wants to participate in visiting the site of that leader, to validate all that's been said, to meet with parents and teachers and others from that site. So these are aligned. And then you would approve a contract at the next regularly scheduled OPA board meeting. That has to be done under state law. So I'm not sure when that board meeting might be.
Scheduled for April 26.
And that would work.
Or what's the May date? Just in case, backup date?
24.
April, uh, May 24? Okay.
And that would be a long break. That would be a long interim between, if you could shoot for the-
You prefer April.
Yeah, because otherwise, the person's going to be in limbo.
Right.
And it's not going to, it's going to be difficult for the person to hold on for a month to hear. But if you can do the 26th, that's great.
Okay.
But it has to be at a regularly scheduled board meeting. So this calendar works nicely.
Okay.
The person could be brought aboard to meet the community well into the May timeframe, could even start potentially on some type of basis based upon that person.
Some candidates will want time to transition.
Sure.
Right. Especially since it's the end of the school year.
Right.
Joseph's going to be in a bad mood that day. Just the day before tax day.
The 26th?
What he?
Tax day is never allowed to be on a Sunday.
So it's the 17th of the year.
He's still going to be, he's already in a bad mood.
Is he a accountant?
I'm always in a bad mood.
I know. I'm always in a bad mood the day of tax, before tax day. I don't- 4/3 or 4/4?
All right. So let me talk about board protocols during the search. And we'll get a revised copy of this to you to get out to everybody. Protocols during the search.
Board meeting will review.
It's really pretty important that if you hear of a cand-
Hang on, I don't think Sandra and I are with us.
I'm going slow.
Sorry, I was just reviewing. Oh, your arm doesn't work right. We'll get you a new copy. Don't worry. You don't have to do it.
So just clarifying dates, so you can write it down.
Yeah, we'll get you-
Sandra's going to start talking into our microphone too, I promise.
So I will, we'll get you the revised schedule, so you'll see all the dates. If anything jumps, like, oh, my gosh, that's not what I thought. And then the protocols during the search, the biggest thing, I think, is really your role is if you hear of a candidate, somebody approaches you, refer them to us. It's really, doesn't, you don't want to muddy it early.
Correct.
So anybody who says, "Oh, I talked, I talked to, you know, to you and I said, wow, this is a great person," say, "Great. Call Peggy or Dennis." You have our cards with our contact information. You have our emails. You know, just don't hesitate to say. If you go home and you go, "Oh, shoot, you know, I thought of this person. I think they'd be a potentially great candidate," email us. You know, we'll take care of it from there, and we'll do the follow-up. I think the other thing is we really need one contact person on the board to be in communication with, so that we can, if we have any questions, there's just one of you instead of trying to get all four of you at the same time. Now, when we come to the position description, that'll go to all of you, that kind of thing. But it just helps us to have one contact person from the board to be in communication with if there's anything that comes up that we need to talk about. So-
Can you give examples of something that could come up in between?
We might have a question about a location or a facility situation. It could be, typically, it's the board president for most of the boards we work with, and it's not very often that we really need to, but it's just, it's just one person that's really the point person in case we need it.
Just in the spirit of transparency, having been through this before six months ago, I would prefer not to have you contact any board member individually.
Okay.
When we do things regarding the executive search, I want us all to be together. I want everyone to know exactly what's going on. So if you could contact Lisa with any questions.
Okay.
If she can't handle it, she can contact me, but, but I think she can, she'll be able to handle it.
Got it. That's perfect. Okay? Is everybody good with that?
So let's talk about, a lot of times, we'll communicate and we'll say, "Here's the position description," or "We're setting up meetings with these candidates," and this sort of thing. So what will happen is we either can send an email to the entire board, or sometimes they'll say, "Okay, the board president's going to get it," then the board president will send it out. What we're hearing is if we get your emails and we have to send communications out, you want us to send it out to the entire board?
Yes. Or, or send it to Lisa, Dr. Hall, and then she will send it to us. So whichever, which works best.
It's typically we'll go, we would go to the whole board then, because, for example, let me give you an example. I sent one out today to this, I'm doing a search that closes tomorrow. So I sent to the board today, you know, we had 35 requests for applications, already 16 people have completed them. It closes tomorrow. We know we have more than that coming in. We're in great shape. You know, we'll, we'll give you a summary by Monday of who, the number of candidates who actually applied, what kinds of positions they have, et cetera. So that's the typical communication.
Right.
It would only be if there was something that we were like, "Oh, my gosh, a press person has called me."
Right.
Somebody from the press calls you. And that happens.
Right.
And so we would say, "Okay." But if you want, on that kind of thing, I'll go to Lisa.
Yes.
And then if, when you do the, the whole board, do like a, do a BCC to, so that no one mistakenly does a reply all and turns it into a-
Oh, God.
Yeah, don't-
We're very sensitive.
No, that's, all right.
Brownack, 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 brownack.
And the other thing is, you know, really, you really want, you know, you have our contact information. If anything comes up that you have, call us. You know, just reach out and let us know. Or email us. We're, we check them 20 times a day, I think. Any?
No, so that's important. We're going to send things out to the entire board, like the position description or profile. Here it is. We need your input. And you just reply back to us individually, not to your colleagues.
Right. Follow, if, if you've done a BCC, then a reply from us will only go to you.
Cut. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions that you have from us, for us? Do you want to take a minute to go into closed session?
It would be helpful to, if we, don't need a lot of time in closed session, but to talk about any personnel-related matters.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to adjourn to closed session at?
8:35.
What is it?
8:35.
8:35. We will be coming back out to close the meeting. I'm sorry, I can't tell exactly how long this is going to take.
It's usually finished.
They're saying it's very soon, because-
Magic words.
But if any of you do leave in the meantime, I want to thank you all for participating,